So two. Uh, let's do a roll call. For Ms. Jordan Byron.
Present.
Mr. Bryce.
Present.
Mr. Williams.
You.
Oh, Ms. Tabachnik.
Here.
Mr. Rowena.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
And I believe your last, Mr. Schuman. Here. Uh, going to uh seat uh Ms. Tabachnik. Um, for uh the entire duration of the meeting tonight. Um. And um. Let's get uh going. The uh first item. Twenty twenty-three dash fifty-three S P. The Newark Housing Authority, forty-five Meadow Street, District Two, Block One. Lot sixty-four modification. To previously uh approved special permit for the construction of fifty-six dwelling units. Within nine structures and other onsite uh improvements. Um. And uh my looking to uh Mr. Bobvilski for the presentation.
Uh Liz Suchi is going to be representing us today. Thank you.
Okay. Liz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Appreciate your time this evening. And as I said to Mr. Schuman, Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. On this cold uh February day. Um, for the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy. With us on tonight's uh meeting is Adam Bobvilski, as you know, Executive Director of the Housing Authority. Lisa Endo, the Project Manager for this project at thirty-four Meadows uh and on Meadow Street. And Kristen Mitchell, she is the Senior Project Manager of Langton Engineering, which was the civil engineering firm for the project. Um, back in November, as you may recall, uh this commission. Granted approval of special permit application to to redevelop forty-five Meadow. To um demolish the structures that exist. And to redevelop it with with fifty-six new apartments in nine structures. And associated site improvements, including parking, landscaping and a community center. Uh, based upon construction cost estimates, the Newark Housing Authority. Has uh taken another look at the approved site plan. And would like to do some very minor changes to it. It would still have other fifty-five units instead of fifty-six. There would still be a community center, where it's still the playground areas, outdoor areas and gathering spaces, same number of parking spaces. Uh, Kristen, would you be able to screen share the um as approved and as proposed? The difference is in on the left is the as approved plan. And it showed the Community Learning Center generally in the center. Um, with uh the uh residential units wrapping around it and also to the east. The proposed plan that we would like uh just to share with you moves the Community Learning Center to the east. And then uh in its place in the center, those residential units will be structured in that center area. So instead of having Community Center in the middle, it'll be off on the east side of the property. Still fifty-five units down one from fifty-six, still seventy-two parking spaces. The Community Center will still have the gym, learning center for school-aged children, property manager's office. And as I indicated, the site will continue to have outdoor amenity space. Um seating area, outdoor fitness, children's play area and a central lawn. That um now wraps through again as it did before with an open corridor from um west to east, east to west. The number of units, seven one-bedroom, nineteen-two-bedroom, twenty-two-three-bedroom and seven-four-bedroom units. So in speaking to Mr. Kleppen, he thought it'd be appropriate to show you this plan, just to let you know that we're just flipping where the Community Center. Was originally approved and to the right side where some dwelling units were going to be structured uh situated in one detached uh structure on the east side of the property. That's the long and short of it. But if you have any questions, Mr. Bobvilski of Miss Endo or Miss um Mitchell, we're all here to answer your questions.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, JJ.
Hi, what was the reason for the move?
It had to do on uh with cost estimates that came in in connection with. The site work, the design, construction of the um residential units on that eastern portion, that leg of the property that you see on the left side of the screen. So uh Langin and the Housing Authority went back into some uh value engineering, cost estimating. And it was determined that putting the Community Center. To in that right leg would be more cost effective than keeping it in the middle. Um, perhaps, Kristen, if you have any additional comments or any clarification on that, I would welcome that you could share those.
Um, yeah, I think you know that, you know, it was just um looking to uh, you know, find ways in the in the site and the and the architecture as well. Um, so Liz, you nailed it. Thanks.
It's just a bummer. Oh, sorry, JJ. Go ahead.
Yeah, so so now that the Community Center is going to be separated from the residential area. Um, this is, will there be a playground, any kind of green space? Will there be any kind of? Um, common space that's kind of like in that area away from the residential? Like um uh um i- is this just a learning center or will there be other uses?
Well, as I mentioned before, there'll still be a gym for the tenants. There'll still be communal space for the tenants. Kristen, is there going to be outdoor?
Yeah.
That area right there.
Exactly. Yeah, so we have the play structures associated directly with the Community Center and Learning Center. We're gonna have, we've added bike parking since um creating this rendering, but we have the outdoor space directly here at the main entry. This actually has um, this is an accessible path directly through. Uh, and then we have um in that central space. We have uh outdoor seating area here, central to the site. Um, some flexible, just like we did in in our previous plan, same amount of open space. And then um it was expressed by all the tenants that uh outdoor fitness was of interest, so we placed that. We kept that still in this location here, so.
What do you mean by outdoor fitness?
Um, uh pull-up bars uh was specifically requested by several. Um, uh, you know, just basically um areas for working out.
Outdoors for working out, but but.
Yeah.
Playground for the children?
So the playground for the children was right here at the directly at the Learning Center and Community Center.
Okay, all right, that's interesting. Thank you.
Uh, are there any other questions?
Did I hear correctly before that this is the um same number of units as uh proposed on on both sides here? Um, and that overall it's a reduction in one unit from what currently exists? Is that accurate?
It's an overall reduction, one unit from what was approved um in November. Total number of units on site right now, I believe it's fifty-four. We were going up to fifty-six, so now we're back to fifty-five, so it's.
Okay.
Generally the same number.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
It's just a bummer we're losing one in this. I'm curious like what Adam's your view on that? I mean, I guess in the overall scheme of things, it's not the end of the world, but. In today's world, it seems like every. One is so valuable.
Yeah, a- a- absolutely, and every unit we can create is 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 critical. Um, if this on this site, we could have, you know, done something much more large and grandiose, we might have considered it. It just the site is just a, it's a perfectly blunt, a terrible site as far as the um the hill goes, the topography. Um, the 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 stones, you know, the structure underneath the the ground, it it just made. For the very difficult um uh the building and development. Um, we are always looking for new sites to expand. We've plans for that um uh but not not on this site.
Tammy?
Oh, hi, thank you. I'm sorry I got here a few minutes late. Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I guess my question would be addressed to um Mr. Bobvilski and some of my comments we might have addressed at the previous um. Time that you came before the commission. But I I really don't understand why we couldn't have added another floor and gotten another twenty or thirty units out of this. I think um this, the cost of construction here is pretty exorbitant, but you already own the land, so building more units should have been. An incremental cost, not a Herculean cost. Um, you know, the media keeps continuing to say that we have a housing crisis here in the state of Connecticut, and this is a perfect opportunity to add. More affordable housing. And I mean, some of the units in here, I believe seven of them are four-bedroom units, so that's really like a single-family house. Would it not be more advisable to make some of those smaller and get? Additional units? Um, i- if it's the goal to have the residents live here from. You know, sort of cradle to grave, then okay, if they need a four-bedroom, but if the goal is to have people live here and eventually. Move out to other housing, it would open up more housing for more people. Um, so whatever you can do to sort of. Talk about that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, so there there's 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 sort of two questions there. The one is um sort of a much larger scale project, and then the other question is. Um, specifically relating to the four-bedroom units. Um, when the Housing Authority, um although the existing units. Are all three-bedroom units on the site. Um, when we did a study, a more in-depth study as to who was living there now. Um, uh, we found a lot of families were either what we refer to as overhoused or underhoused. There are either too many people for a three-bedroom unit, and we hadn't had an opportunity to transfer them to a larger unit because we only have so many. Or there were some that families that had, you know, the kids had moved out and now they were only a two or even a one-bedroom size sized family. So when we are developing this new Meadow Gardens. We promised all the families that are were living there. That are living there now or who have recently moved out, um, you know, with our assistance. We promised them that they would have a right to return. And we felt like if we want to promise a family to have a right to return, we need to have an appropriately sized unit for them to return. To, so there were seven families that would require a four-bedroom unit. Um, and that's why we chose to build seven um four-bedroom units. Um, uh, in the in the new development. So really, the size of the units was was dictated by the families, for the most part, was dictated by the. The size of the families that live there now or who have recently moved out with our help. Um, uh, the second question about could we just build something a lot bigger? Um, uh, there there are many considerations there. Some of them are sort of what we have to, what we can build there as of right. Um, but also parking is a huge, a huge challenge on the site. But I would defer to um Lisa Endo and my staff if she wants to speak more fully about the um the 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 size we chose.
You're exactly right, Adam. Parking was one of the main constraints. Um, we also thought that it would be simpler to stick with as-of-right zoning. And so this current plan and elevations um do match what is what the space is currently zoned for, but primarily it's the parking.
When you say. Adam, when you say parking and Lisa, when you say, do you mean like realistic parking in terms of what your tenants need or parking like based on the zoning requirements?
Based on zoning.
So why don't you come to us and say, could you change, could you give us a variance on the parking? We, the Planning and Zoning Commission has been talking a lot about parking and that maybe we are asking for too much parking from developers and we realize that parking is expensive. And. I I just think this is such a lost opportunity. It really frustrates me. I know, I think we're thinking very short-term and not long-term. And come to us and say, hey, could you, could you reduce it to one? Right now there are fifty-six units and seventy-two parking spaces. So what's that, one point three, I guess?
And that's what, and if I may interrupt, that's what the requirement is, and this this project is a. Dev- redevelopment of a site in accordance with the regulations that exist today. Uh, the Housing Authority did not want to approach the the Commission for a text amendment, which not only would then be applicable to this site, but would have been applicable to any other site similarly zoned. And it did not want to approach the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance for parking. It wanted to replace the site with number of units that existed today, one or two in either direction. On a site that is that is very challenged from a topographic perspective. And also to give it the same kind of feel that it had. Now, another story would have been great, but it's not allowed in the zone. Uh, another story adds more parking and then another story with more units, uh, there may not be enough space to accommodate the parking that would be required. Under the current zoning regulations or under the your new regulations. So it's um, there are a variety of con- considerations that went into the development of this plan as it is today, and keep in mind, it's an approved plan. I mean, if if the commission is is not desire, not in um. If if you're not um. Willing to look at the change of moving the the units that are on the left and to where the Community Center is and vice versa. We have the plan that we have. It's, we're not back to you for a brand-new approval. If um if there was an opportunity to add more units, I'm sure the Housing Authority would have done so, but it can't be at this site.
And just for the, just want to clarify one thing. This is in C D. This was approved before the rewrite, correct?
Right.
From a timing, so with those old standards, the new regs, this is C D four, is that right, Ben? No, this is C D. This is a C D three?
Density.
Okay, so this is the density in the parking does not fall into this space. Okay.
That was my question as well. Thank you, Nick.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Um. If not, I think we ought to move to um action. Um, unless uh uh Attorney Suchi, um, you have anything more to say?
No, Mr. Chairman, I I do not.
Okay. Uh, Steve, do we have a resolution on this?
No, Steph didn't prepare a resolution. Can we consider it a minor change and thought you could just take a simple vote?
Okay. Uh, then um let's uh do that. I think though ought to be a roll call. Um, what we're voting on is uh the uh minor change. Uh, reducing the project by one housing unit and moving. Uh, the uh Community uh Center. Um. Let's um, you want to do a roll call, Steve?
Sure, if somebody, whoever is sharing, if you could, thanks. Um. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I was just going to move that we approved the modification.
Okay, um. I guess we'll start then with Ms. Tabachnik. Did we lose Ms. Tabachnik?
Thanks.
She's there.
She's there.
I'll circle back. Uh, Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Bryce?
I wish we could do something about the parking, but uh yes, approved.
Ms. Tabachnik? Oops, can't hear you, Anna, sorry. Thumbs up. Okay, we'll take that as a yes. Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And Mr. Schuman?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, um, the change is approved. Uh, thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Before we move uh uh on. Um, I I do want to say something about uh the um. Um, public hearing on the capital budget. Uh, we went through this uh last year. Uh, we have received a couple of uh letters now. Uh, regarding uh the uh capital budget. Um, we're not going to act on those letters. We have absolutely no role. In determining um whether uh and what. Uh, the capital nu- uh capital budget numbers ought to look like. Uh, we do not approve the capital budget. We do not. Uh, do anything more. Than simply uh say that the capital budget items are in accordance with the uh. Plan of conservation and uh development. Um, we can't, we, our role is not to affect. Any of those numbers, and I know a number of you have asked us. Uh, to uh support. Um, particular projects. That is not our role. So if you're here. Uh, to comment uh on uh items in that regard. Um, frankly, you're wasting our time and you're wasting your time. Uh, because there's, that's not our role. Um, I would refer you to the mayor's office, to the Board of Education. Uh, to your council person, uh, to the Board of Estimate. Uh, but we play no role whatsoever in uh determining uh those numbers. Um, I. Hate for you to have to sit through uh the rest of uh this meeting. And get absolutely no uh satisfaction. Um. With that, uh, we're going to uh move on. Uh, the uh next item is twenty twenty-four. Uh, dash O two, uh CAM application. David E. Keelin and Christina Lake, sixteen. Uh, Rocky Point Road District Six. Block thirty-six, lot sixty-one. Proposed addition to and raising of existing Sam uh a single-family house. Um, and uh we will need to report and uh. Recommend uh action on this item. Why don't we begin with uh the presentation from uh the homeowners or their representatives? Uh, then I am uh going to ask Amelia Williams from the uh. Planning and Zoning Commission staff to comment.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much again. Liz Suchi, I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec and Hennessy, and I represent the owner of the property, which is the David Keelin Reconcilable Trust. Along with David Keelin and his wife Christina Lake, who are the owners and occupants. Uh, present this evening is John Grinstead, Project Senior Project Manager of Workshop A P D, the architectural firm responsible for the project. Along with Thomas Zoli, who is one of the principals in Workshop A P D. Adam Serini of Rocco V. DeAndrea, who's a project engineer. And Azure Di Schleicher, professional engineer and the Vice President of Coastal Engineering with Race Coastal. She is on hand to answer questions you may have and also to respond to some of the comments by D E P that were shared with us through um Ms. Williams. Just by way of background, um, the applicant applied for and received variances from the Newark Zoning Board of Appeals in November. They generally related to stories, height and uh building coverage. And this was all in connection with some additions to the building. The the dwelling and also the opportunity to elevate the dwelling so that it met or exceeded the minimum minimum FEMA requirement for minimum flood elevation. Um, in one, in a most unusual circumstance, all of the neighbors surrounding this property and on the street. Uh, all the neighbors who surround it and many on the street. Uh, not only supported the application for these variances, but also sent letters of support to the Z B A. Uh, a CAM application was subsequently filed with this commission in a timely fashion. It's required to be filed within thirty days of the Z B A action. And it was filed on December fourteenth. And the neighbors were once again notified of the submission of the application on December twenty-first. Via certificate of mailing, which certificate was subsequently returned to the staff and should be in file. So as Mr. Schuman indicated, the property is at sixteen Rocky Point Road. It's in a B resident zone within the CAM zone. It is directly adjacent to Long Island Sound. District Six, block thirty-six, lot sixty-one. The lot size is about eighty-two hundred square feet, which is larger than the six thousand two hundred fifty that is minimum required for B resident zone lot. As we mentioned before, there is a single-family dwelling with an attached two-car garage, an existing masonry stone seawall and a flagstone patio. Over the years, various uh additions to the house were constructed, some of which required variances, and I think some of which would have been before this commission and your predecessors for approval. The flood zone requires uh its V E velocity is on fifteen feet and A E zone fifteen feet. So the proposal before you, from which was reviewed by the Z B A is to make various changes to the existing dwelling. To elevate the dwellings so that the first floor and the first floor and all the ductwork enjoys mechanicals all are above that fifteen-foot FEMA plus one foot. And as a matter of fact, uh, the proposal cons- uh contemplates reducing the number of bedrooms from existing by one. Uh, the project has been designed to accommodate the one, two, five, ten, twenty-five and fifty-year and hundred-year storms. Um, it includes the installation of two-chamber systems underneath the lawn to accommodate storm wa- storm storm water. Along with infiltration of water quality volume from the roof, excess flow bypass features and some stormwater discharge through the existing seawall. We are not proposing any changes to the seawall that has existed in its current configuration for many years. Um, various coastal resources are nearby, including intertidal flats, tidal wetlands, coastal hazard areas and developed uh shorefront. Um, and the coastal policies associated with this project are general development. We have no anticipated impacts on the coastal resources, but beneficially, the house, as we've said before, will be elevated to meet the minimum FEMA flood requirements plus one foot, which was something that Department of. Energy Environmental Protection uh lauded the designers for. Stormwater will infiltrate and be treated where none of that exists today. And um. As we said before, the number of bedrooms will be reduced by one. The project has been reviewed by the Fire Department. Water Pollution Control Authority and Water Departments sign-offs, I believe, have been received and are in the file. The Harbor Management Commission evaluated the proposal in January. And determined it to be consistent with the Harbor Management Plan, and I think a letter to that effect is also in your file. Uh, Public Works had some additional comments and we responded with revised plans. To address those comments, and I suspect that the Public Works Department will issue its sign-off in upcoming days. Uh, there were comments from Ms. Williams, which to which we responded. And also D E E P had some comments and we can address those. Uh, either now or after Ms. Williams makes her um remarks. At this point, if you would, I'd like Adam Serini to screen share the site plan so you can see what the drainage looks like. Thereafter, John Grinstead of Workshop can walk you through what the elevations look like. And then finally, I'd like Ms. Schleicher to just address some of the E P comments. So Adam, could you screen share and then walk them through the plan?
Sure.
Thank you.
This is Adam Serini, Civil Engineer with DeAndrea. Um. Here, I have the watershed maps from our drainage report. This is the existing conditions. So you can see most of the property flows to the back. And here is our proposed conditions, right? The sound is on the left and the street is on the right. Um, so we have a lot of the roof area, the rear half the roof um collected routed to two-chamber systems, as Liz has said. And they both will eventually overflow and connect to an existing pipe that runs. Through the seawall. So we're not doing a new pipe through the seawall because Connecticut Deep does not usually like that. Um, so we're using what we have. We are infiltrating water into the ground, which provides treatment. Um, recharges groundwater, um. Even reduces flows here. Which is not necessarily necessary when you're discharging to a tidal water body. Um, and it provides the the uh. Retention volume that Connecticut Deep likes um when you're discharging to a wetland. Because they're concerned about freshwater inundation of a saltwater wetland, so we're retaining a lot of water. Um. As you can see from our table in the report. All the peak flows are either the same or being reduced. All the runoff volumes are either being the same or reduced. Um. Liz, do we have anyone else presenting? Uh. John, I think, the architect.
John would be next.
Yep.
Before you go, Adam, does anyone have any any questions of Mr. Serini with respect to the civil engineering plan and stormwater management system that's proposed?
Hi, there are one question. Um, you had mentioned you're planning on reusing the existing point of discharge through the uh seawall. The water that would flow through that, um, would that go through the the treatment as you mentioned before, through ground um infiltration into the retention tanks before overflowing and out of the seawall? Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. The first flush of runoff is what they call it. Um, will enter the chambers and will seep into the ground, and only when there's a lot of water from a big storm will excess water overflow into the. Into the existing discharge. It's an improvement over existing additions.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi, is there any way for you to do a split screen between the existing and the proposed?
Uh. I don't know if I could do it on the screen share.
Well, right now, there there is, there is no stormwater management system on the property at all. Um, whatever comes off, whatever comes off the roof and off the gutters, it just comes onto the the ground and is not treated in any way. It's not detained. Um, and it it enters that discharge outlet. Uh, and it goes into Long Island Sound as is. Right now, there's um. The the treatment that's being proposed is an improvement over the conditions that exist, and Adam, maybe you can certainly be more uh. More, provide more clarity than I did, but um. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, so there is no treatment on the existing condition. So here's what it looks like now. Um, you have most of the property flowing to the back to the ocean, to the sound. And you have one yard drain that just flows out. That's where the existing outfall comes from, but there's no treatment. Um. There's no retention, there's. So under proposed conditions, now we have. Water flowing to the chambers, and if you're concerned about the front, there's no difference. There's no change in flows. So that can, so that uh scenario is staying the same.
And when you say treated, do you mean filtration?
Yeah, so what it does is it comes into these chambers that are under the lawn. And it seeps into the ground. And soil is actually pretty good at filtering runoff. So it filters runoff as it enters the ground, becomes groundwater, and then it'll eventually make its way. Into the sound.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
John, could you um provide the commission with an overview of the proposal?
Of course. Um, Adam, okay, thank you. All right. I will give a a general overview, um, and then we can jump into the allegations. Everyone has the smescreen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, so as Liz mentioned, um, in relating on Rocky Point, uh, we have an existing building, sixteen Rocky Point Road. Um, obviously, the existing conditions of this home, which actually dates from. The late eighteen hundreds. the late eighteen hundreds, as far as our understanding, and it's been, you know, improved variously throughout the years. And basically, our aim and our charge from our client was to raise the existing house, improve it, and obviously bring it into compliance with the current regulations and current world reality that we all live in. So there's obviously various site improvements that are happening. We were granted approval, as Liz mentioned, from the ZBA to basically take this existing house, lift it, add on to it. It's kind of a little diagram here. This is the back. Let's see, the existing seawall. You know, take it, lift it, and improve it. So you can kind of see here, in red dash is the existing home. Up top is the existing elevations. This is the rear facing the sound. But we're taking these volumes and basically improving the house and bringing it into compliance. As you hear, raising it. Same thing here. Kind of see the three-D of what we're proposing here.
John, could you just describe what the breakaway wall, flood vents, and things of that nature that are being added to meet the compliance?
Of course. So we, again, these are previous regulations, right? Because you're enacting new ones in a couple of days. We have our B resident zone that kind of is in the line of AE fifteen and VE fifteen here, which kind of subdivides the property. And basically, we've proposed to kind of not make this, you know, space habitable, right? With current regulations and basically go for a higher standard of compliance with the breakaway walls here. Obviously, we're also doing the same thing here. We will employ flood vents, which is kind of the letter of the law in this area where the two cars have to be at grade and the existing kind of storage area, which we're, you know, modifying slightly as part of the means and methods of raising the home itself. And appears movement involved there.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Grinstead? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Slicher, would you be kind enough to just respond to some of the comments that DEP had raised and also which were raised in the staff report? I think that would be helpful.
Sure. Excuse me. Good evening. Azure Dee Slicher, PE Principal with Race Coastal Engineering. And as John just described, you know, the house is being brought up to a higher standard for V-zone compliance, although it is entirely within the A-zone with a V-zone type foundation, as well as breakaway walls and flood vents in the inhabitable space below the BFE, which, as Liz mentioned, lauded in their CAM review, while at the same time bringing up some concerns about potentially increased flood risk due to the increased living space in the proposed dwelling improvements. And I did want to mention my experience with similar comments is that typically those comments are reserved for high-density construction in the flood zone, apartment complexes, condos, and so forth, where you're bringing a lot of people into a tight space and have concerns during, you know, flood conditions. In this particular case, while we are increasing the square foot of the square footage of the house and the living space, as mentioned at the top of the presentation, the number of bedrooms is actually being reduced. So therefore, the occupancy of the house, in theory, is being, will be the same or less for kind of permanent inhabitants of the house. And therefore, with the increased resiliency and meeting the flood requirements, as well as reduced bedrooms and therefore occupancy, we don't believe that this causes concern for increased flood risk, and in fact, quite the opposite, that this is a reduction in flood risk overall and therefore, you know, should be approved.
Dee, if you would just be kind enough to let the commission know what, a little bit about your background and interaction with DEPs. I'm not sure when the last time might have been that you appeared before them.
Sure, actually, I think it's been probably a decade before, been before P and Z. I'm usually before Harbor Management Commission. But I have twenty-three years of experience in Connecticut as a coastal engineer. As I mentioned, I'm a licensed civil PE as well. And I've been specializing in coastal engineering, wave load analysis, FEMA, compliance, flood mapping, and all of the related things with a lot of permitting experience with DEEP. And as part of this project, and our letter should be on the record, we did look at a lot of the other, the project elements, the hardscape. There's retaining walls and so forth that are associated with the yard. And so as a matter of our analysis, we looked at, you know, will any of those features, you know, cause adverse impacts with respect to flooding? Again, the site is in the flood zone. It will flood. But when that happens, you know, is there going to be wave reflection, run-up, or anything caused, you know, by these additional structures, you know, in the rear yard that will, you know, cause harm? And our analysis demonstrated that they will not. And again, that that letter should be on the record as part of the CAM application.
Can you talk a little bit more about the increase in impervious surfaces generally here? I get what you're saying on some of this, but just curious, you know, staff has talked about that. I think DEEP even brought that up as well. And why you think that's not going to be an issue?
I think that may actually be a question for Adam.
Yeah.
Well, I can say that we're increasing impervious area by, what did I say in the report? I think seven hundred square feet or something. Some small amount compared to the site area. And you could say, oh, that might have a small impact. Yes, but we also have a drainage system to account for that. And we're following the standards of Norwalk's Drainage Manual. And of course, that's not going to affect flooding really. So I think the increase, the small increase in impervious area is managed.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Serini. Then when you lift the house and assumedly the floor of the garage will be something hard like concrete, what is the material that is under the rest of the house that is not the garage?
We intend to put a slab on grade in that space.
So a slab would be under the entire structure?
Yes.
Wouldn't, I'm not an engineer. I'm not trying to be one. But wouldn't it be better to have crushed stone? And so then it would be more impervious? And then when there is a big storm, there's some drainage of the water rather than just going right underneath your house and into the little cul-de-sac?
I don't know. I feel like the water would come so quick that it wouldn't make a difference. Just the inundation. You wouldn't have significant... The ground is not, the ground drains a lot slower than that. So I don't see a significant difference there. Of course, we have, any rainwater would go on the roof, and that would be captured. So that's a different story.
Right, well, and if rainwater falls to the ground and some of it might go under the structure, then it could be absorbed that way rather than just in the two cul-de-sac drains that you have?
Yeah. I would hope it wouldn't. I mean, I would hope the roof drains are all in proper working order, and they would capture the runoff and bring it in the rear to the cul-de-sac for treatment.
Architecturally, Tammy, we wouldn't want to put ourselves or any home in a situation where you're capturing water underneath a built structure like that. It presents a lot of different other types of problems where you're... That's not where we want to put our retention. If we need additional retention for any reason, we would try to add it outside of the footprint of the building.
Okay, I've been in some lifted houses that have had gravel or crushed rock, I should say. You know, it's substantial. It's not just like a little gravel on the soil or the dirt. But then, would you all consider adding another drain on the property?
I mean, we can have drains in the yard. That's fine.
I've been in that particular location after some big storms like hurricanes and after just some super-high tides. And it floods quite a bit there. So I mean, I understand why you want to lift the house. I think it's obviously advisable. But I'm just, the water has to somehow be absorbed or escape. And there's not a lot of extra space there for that to happen. And the storm drains on the street are overwhelmed pretty quickly from below, you know, just from like the tide coming back into the storm drains. So it floods quite easily.
Yeah, right now on the plan, in our latest revision, we've worked with the landscape architect, and they are proposing some yard drains in the rear. So we've had them added to the site plans.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
If there's a... Sorry, Mr. Schulman.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Jay.
I'm not sure if there's a presentation on the landscaping piece, or maybe I missed it. But is there one tree that's slated for removal, that I understand that correctly? And curious about why it needs to be removed. It looks like it's on the corner of the property. Maybe I'm misinterpreting the plans.
Do you want me to share the landscape?
Yeah, please. I'm not sure. I don't remember, Mr. Bryce. I'm off the top of my head.
Hold on. Can y'all see the landscape plan?
Yeah, can you enlarge it a bit? That's better.
Oops. There you go. I know for a fact that there is a tree in the bottom right corner of this drawing that's right by the street. I think they're trying to keep that one.
Oh, great. Okay.
There's another little, I think there's another tree. It looks like a ginkgo or something that's in the back that's going to be in the way of the house expansion.
Okay.
Yeah. There's not much in the way of trees on this property existing, so.
That's kind of what I figured. I was confused why the tree in the corner. And I think that was my misunderstanding then. I thought it was the tree in the bottom right corner that was being removed. It seemed out of the way of the site.
That's the one that they were trying to keep.
Great.
We'll see if they can.
Is there anything else?
No. Does anyone else have any questions for either Ms. Slicher or Mr. Zoli, Mr. Grinstead, or Mr. Serini?
All right, then I would, I would ask Amelia for her comments on the project.
I do think a lot of the commissioners asked questions that were very similar to the concerns I raised in the staff memo, which have been addressed. So I will take this time to remind you all that in approving a coastal site plan, you're looking for consistency with the Coastal Management Act, as outlined in the Connecticut General Statutes. And I think that we see a lot of single-family residences come through with coastal site plans. And probably the two most applicable legislative goals and policies are preserving and enhancing coastal resources, and then also considering the potential impact of flooding. So it minimizes damage to and destruction of life and property. And I think those are the two most applicable policies that should be considered. And as outlined in my memo, I think that areas of concern regarding consistency is the increase of the living area, as well as the increase of impervious surface. And DEEP also raised a good point about the outfall pipe into the right into the harbor, which is being improved. But they did ask a good question, which is why can't all of the stormwater be treated on-site, which I think is the ideal scenario, similar to how raising a house and not expanding the living area and keeping or even decreasing impervious surface would be the ideal coastal site plan application. And in this case, and you know, I understand that people will ask for more, but these are things worth considering. And I think we've asked a lot of good questions about impervious surface and maybe using crushed stone. And there might be other areas on the property that this could be done. There are plantings proposed entirely in planters, which it might make a difference in filtration of water. I don't think it would make a huge difference, and I understand homeowners wanting to achieve a certain aesthetic. But it is it is difficult to see a very improved site like this. And though it's being, it is meeting standards, I feel like it could potentially go beyond that if the commission were to find that it's not as consistent. Or it is consistent, but there is more that can be done to have it fall more in line with the goals and policies of the CAM Act.
Thank you, Amelia.
Can we get a response on the outflow pipe question that Amelia raised from the applicant?
Thanks.
Okay. What I would say is we're sort of maintaining the existing divide of runoff that's already flowing to the street and runoff that's already flowing to the back towards the ocean, towards the sound, excuse me. So we're providing good treatment for the runoff that goes to the sound. There's a difficulty providing treatment with runoff flowing to the street because the house is extremely close to the street, unusually close to the street. That's existing on conforming. We have variances for that. And the DEP also brought up...
Can you talk more about the difficulties with the front? Like, is it cost? Is it just engineeringally prohibited? Like, what's the deal there?
The biggest deal is lack of space, to be honest. There's not much of it. There's no front yard.
There's really no space. I think we're a foot and a foot and a half off the property line in the front. That's existing conditions, which are going to be maintained. So we don't have the ability to do anything in the front. And I think what's being proposed is to make the current situation better than, through the proposal, to improve the current situation. Adam, is there any stormwater quality treatment in the in the rear before it enters the outflow pipe?
Yes, this is what I've already described, the two-chamber systems that are underground.
My understanding of what you said was that the underground treatment, the water that's treated goes into the ground, and anything that's unable to be handled goes out the pipe. So what goes out the pipe isn't really treated, it sounds like to me.
Most of the runoff, most of the pollutants are found in the first flush. This is what they call it, the first inch or so of runoff. Norwalk has a standard, and the state manual has a standard called water quality volume. And in the standard, the first inch of runoff is supposed to be treated. So the systems will fill up to a certain level. Below that level, water will be held. That's the water quality volume. And above that, beyond that, systems will have the overflow into the existing discharge. So most of the pollutants will be trapped in the system and will filter down into the ground instead of flowing out into the sound.
Okay, I understand your explanation. And I guess what troubles me is that, you know, you said a couple of times that it's an existing condition and you're not making it any worse. But the reality is that you're substantially expanding the improvement that's on the property. So, you know, saying you're not making it any worse is, I think, kind of gratuitous. But, okay, I thank you for the explanation.
Any other comments from commission members? Any other comments from commission members?
If if I may make just a few observations, I understand, Mr. Rowena, where what you're where you're coming from. Um, I think all we were trying to explain was that right now there's nothing. There is no stormwater treatment. There's no detention, whatever. There there's nothing that can control um, flood floodwaters that come in and it can't, it doesn't infiltrate well. It's, there's a system that will be designed to improve that. So I, and that's, I think, what we're trying to explain is that it's an improvement over the current situation. But I understand your comment. Um, the only other thing I'd like to share is that even staff has indicated that the the proposal is consistent with the Coastal Area Management Act. Perhaps some of the comments that this commission raised and the others that are lingering from staff and DEP uh, could be those that are conditions of approval that we work with staff and DEP to either evaluate, as Ms. Langala said, perhaps other materials underneath the structure or additional um, gallery in the back or whatever, Adam, you had indicated or on the revised plans. So that we move the matter forward, but work with staff and work with the with Department of Public Works to address the concerns that you've raised and the others have raised.
All right, we do have a resolution. Let's put up the resolution and um, uh, take a look at it, see if there are changes that we want to make to it. See if we want to approve it or deny it.
So the first two sign-offs are the typical ones I provide um, in accordance with the plans. Making sure we get department sign-offs, public works, erosion and sediment controls. Any changes be reviewed by staff. Utilities comply with setbacks, flood certifications. And then ten and eleven are kind of like placeholders. Um, with the two concerns that were brought, or what some of the concerns brought up um, for impervious surface and stormwater treatment, just I worded it as maximum extent possible. I do think it is better to have a more uh, finite description in the resolution because, you know, the applicant could of course say that the current proposal is the maximum extent possible. So if there's any language we want to change there, and otherwise, um, the rest of the conditions are also pretty standard in regard to plantings and uh, deep jurisdiction with the seawall.
Uh, Amelia, do you have any suggested uh, language changes? Regarding regarding those items?
I don't off the top of my head. I think it is. It is difficult. I mean, we, you could say, or you could ask them to reduce the impervious surface by a hundred square feet or potentially if there's a stone patio on. I, and I don't remember the plans off the top of my head, I apologize, but just have that be made pervious if there's a specific section or something. And then um, the stormwater, honestly, I wasn't sure which way the commission was going to lean. And it seems that you could, I don't know that we can require them to treat all the stormwater on site because I don't know if that is possible. So that one might be fine, leaving it as is. But again, if we leave it as is, then it's, I think the expectation is that it would probably the plans that you looked at tonight would be what are approved, is my guess.
What was the last thing that you said to me? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, that was, I did not word it well, but I would say if we leave the resolution as it is now um, with the language of the maximum extent possible, that we're likely not going to see big changes between what we've looked at tonight and then, you know, what the applicant provides us the maximum extent possible. Because I imagine they'd have in their proposal done as much as they can do while also compromising with what the homeowner wants.
Well, that's, that's funny you say that because that was what I was going to ask you. Um, is if if you were comfortable with maximum extent possible and would be, you know, able to have the discussion with the engineers, et cetera, to determine, you know, what's inconvenient versus impossible.
Yeah, I mean, would definitely be happy to do that with myself and support from the rest of our staff to to work with um, with the applicant, work with their team to figure that out. Because they do understand that you guys are all, you know, volunteer your time. And I don't think any of us are experts on these two very specific things.
Well, I mean, there's, um, Tammy raised a, you know, good question about what goes underneath the building. Um, and and I'm still not sure that I um, get totally the explanation about the runoff um, or overflow, I should say. But, you know, I think that you have more expertise than we do. And and so does your staff, the rest of the staff. So if you're comfortable with leaving maximum extent possible and then working with the applicant, then I have no problem with that. And I think attorney such you offered that as a compromise, so to speak.
Certainly, certainly.
So I just have a question from Michelle. I'm sorry, for Amelia. Sorry, Amelia. Okay, so is is, are the improvements per deep recommendations or instructions?
The the letter from deep, you mean? That is, it's really just comments. They're comments uh, for you as the commission to consider. They, I don't believe any of this work needs a permit through deep, but because it's, you know, abutting deep um, jurisdiction with the tidal waters, we refer to them and see if they have any comments. And then uh, just provide those comments to you. So it is more recommendations and it's not a requirement.
Thank you.
Michelle, I think the thing Amelia was pointing out was saying, leaving it with the condition of maximum is likely to leave the plan as is versus going more specific. Am I understanding what you're saying, Amelia?
I would, I mean, if I were the applicant, I would probably try and have what I've presented so far be what gets approved in the end. So, and I completely understand that, but I, yeah, exactly. I think.
That's the rub here, Dick, a little bit is, do you want to add some specifics or tease to this such that it's a little, give staff a little bit more in the conversation? Frankly, I'm finding all these.
I don't know if I have the expertise.
Yeah, I'm finding all these.
That's the problem.
Well, what if on on number ten, on number ten, for example, what if we were to say a pervious surface uh, be used um, to the maximum extent possible uh, pending further um, a conversation between um, P and Z staff and the engineers. Uh, Amelia, does that give you um, a little bit more um, uh, control over the situation?
I mean, I think, I think it's. Yeah, it it is definitely easier if we have something more specific in the resolution to point back to. But with this or the um, the previous wording, we can definitely work with um, with the applicant to figure something out. And hopefully have a little, a small reduction at least in the impervious surface.
Okay, uh, uh, except what this does is it guarantees you the opportunity for those further conversations. If we don't change the language, then then those conversations may or may not take place.
I see what you mean. I like that.
Okay.
Lou.
Yeah, go ahead, Tammy.
If I may, to the applicant and with, you know, not meaning to be completely sincere. Is there any thought on the applicant's part to make the addition a little bit smaller? Because then that might mitigate the fear about all this runoff. Because the property, uh, because the size of the structure, I mean, is becoming so much larger than it currently is.
Well, I I think I can answer that at this point. This is the first that we're hearing that that may be a consideration that this commission would like us to bring back to our client. I don't think I or Thomas or John can answer that tonight. Um, but not only the comments that you're raising as part of um, engineering design and flood control. Are those are comments we have to share with the client and evaluate internally and discuss with staff. But at this point, I can't say that that would be something that the client would be willing to do. I don't know, quite honestly.
I I'm just kind of tossing it out there because it feels like we're at a little bit of an impasse.
Well, Tammy.
But I'm just sensing that.
Tammy, do you, do you want to suggest language?
Um.
I mean, similar language, you know, that would require the applicant to have further conversations with the staff regarding uh, the size of the um, uh, expansion, for example.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could add that into the um, somewhere. I don't know if it goes on line ten, just because maybe there's a trade-off. I'm not trying to redesign the property. I'm just asking if that might be feasible and then therefore the drainage wouldn't become as big an issue.
It doesn't seem like if 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 we did that and voted for it, it doesn't seem like we're approving anything though at that point.
Well, I think, Richard, all we would be approving uh, is an opportunity for uh, the staff to have further discussion with the uh, applicant uh, regarding the size of uh, the development.
I will say, I do think it's um, a bit more appropriate if the commission were to make that decision and not leave it up to staff regarding the size of the improvements. But um, regarding statutory timelines, I don't think you need to make a decision tonight. So if you did want to suggest that or encourage the applicant to explore those options, they can come back with revised plans or come back saying, no, we don't want to do that. And here's why at a following meeting.
I haven't had, uh, I haven't had any opportunity to to speak to Thomas or John. Um, obviously, given what the format is, but that was something Amelia, you were way ahead of me on that. Perhaps what we can do, um, if if it's um, acceptable to the commission is consider the comments the commission has raised tonight, the possible conditions of approval and some of the other items that Mr. Rowena, Mr. Cantor and others and Ms. Langalis have raised. Uh, the engineers and the architects can speak to one another. They can speak to the client and perhaps before the next meeting. And we might be able to have a discussion with Amelia, just see where we are. So in in effort to bring this matter ahead and to bring it to closure, rather than having conditions that are somewhat amorphous. And then we're not sure, staff isn't sure, we're both in this odd situation. At least we can discuss them internally, talk to the client, see if there's anything else that can be changed, have those discussions with staff. And maybe within a week or so, we we can come back with something that addresses the comments. And if we can, we can implement, fine. If we can't, we'll explain why we can't. Is is that something that would be?
I think that's a great idea.
And to Amelia, is that where you were going?
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
That, that sounds great to us, too.
Okay, well, then that that means um, we, we, we approve nothing. And we agree to uh, continue this conversation um, at the earliest um, uh, possible opportunity within our upcoming agendas.
Knowing that our client would like to move forward as quickly as they can. And we also have certain timeframes within which we need to secure zoning and building permits following the grant of variance. I'm sure they are very much motivated to, um, they'll be motivated to discuss with Thomas and with John and with Adam, see where we can come. Maybe there are some additional changes that can be implemented that will satisfy your concerns.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Uh, the uh, next item on our agenda, Greenwich Realty Development uh, uh, is coming off the agenda. Um, we, we will put that on a future uh, uh, agenda. Uh, I think uh, the hope is that uh, we can address that next week. Um, with that, um, we'll move on to uh, public hearings.
Mr. Chairman, if I can interrupt.
Go ahead, Richard.
Second, um, do you have enough people here if I dive off to continue?
Uh, so the question is, do we have a quorum? One, two, three, four, five, six. Yes, we do.
My sitting time is done.
That's, that's, that's okay.
Feel better.
Before you came on the meeting, uh, I was making the uh, suggestion uh, that maybe a snow thrower should be in the future.
I have one, but you know, by the time the DPW piles up my side, I have six hundred feet aside. Thank you.
Take care.
Right.
Okay, uh, we're gonna um, move on to the capital budget. And uh, uh, again, uh, for those people um, uh, hoping to uh, speak about specific uh, capital items. It unfortunately, it simply is not our role to opine about uh, any of the numbers in the capital budget. We have absolutely no role uh, regarding that. Um, our, our only role is to look at the items and determine whether uh, they meet with the requirements of the uh, P O C D. And in almost every single case, there are perhaps a handful of exceptions. Uh, they do indeed meet the requirements of the uh, uh, P O C D. Um, with that, and Tammy, what I would like to do is do this by exception. Not go through uh, every item. Simply go through those items that the members of the committee um, had uh, questions about. Um, and with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Tammy Langalis, who uh, with the second year has bravely uh, chaired this subcommittee.
Thank you, Lou. Um, and thank you to the other commissioners and you as well, Lou, who uh, participated in a day-long event of listening to all the uh, different department heads. They uh, came over to City Hall to the Planning and Zoning Office and basically told us what their goals were for capital projects for uh, this year. And then they also give a four-year um, outlook, but we didn't really discuss those because um, that isn't our purview as well. So um, just for the benefit of the public, I guess, um, the Police Department and Combined Dispatch, Economic Community and Development, I'm just going to read these off so people know what the different departments are. And then I'll just give a very brief little synopsis. Um, so um, Economic Community and Development includes redevelopment, the Library, Historical Commission, the Arts Commission, business and business development and tourism, community services, code enforcement, transportation, mobility and parking, economic and community development and planning and zoning. Then the Board of Education, the Fire Department, Information Technology, the Health Department and the Department of Public Works, which is broken out into five different departments, Building and Facility Maintenance, WPCA, that's the Water Control, Engineering Operations and Recreation and Parks. And with very few exceptions, I think, uh, the commissioners that were there found that the requested items did meet the uh, chosen Plan of Conservation and Development um, item. Each department is required to tell us what code. And they put just, it's a number and a letters basically taken out of the P O C D, uh, the page and chapter number, in essence. And I think the only thing that we thought was not necessarily, we thought some things might not have been capital, but that they met the P O C D, but they weren't capital items, that they might be better placed in the operating budget. But that isn't really our purview either. And um, so I guess, does anybody have any specific questions about any of them? And it's quite a lot of uh, you know, items and pages.
I have a one question um, regarding how we should handle items uh, that were provided to us without a citation. Uh, how should we address those? Because there were some, at least documented where I I didn't see any citations. I wasn't sure what the alignment uh, would be.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that we asked those people to get back to planning and zoning with the, with the P O C D citation. I don't know if they did.
Cape, and that was almost exclusively the Health Department.
Yep, although there.
As I recall.
Yeah, there were a few others, but um, I'm trying to remember if they were in. Uh, I I did annotate which, like, departments had one or more with that. But um, it might have been in one of the out year. And so that was kind of my follow-up question. I guess I said I had one, but I had a follow-up question, which was, are we only looking at um, compliance or uh, alignment with the P O C D for uh, the twenty twenty-five fiscal year or without years as well?
Correct.
Okay. So I would have to check in the others to see if they're.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Brian, sorry.
I was just gonna, uh, so.
I was just gonna, so yeah, the Health Department was the one they didn't get back to us, but I had looked at, you know, sort of similar other requests that were made. Particularly the Building and Facilities Maintenance Department of DPW, which does a lot of the building upgrades of city owned property. So I believe it was section, let me just pull it up here, because this is. This is what I would probably classify, which is P O C D code 11.1. B. Essentially just building upgrades, which were all sort of what Health Department was requesting.
Yeah, they're pretty straightforward in terms of it being a capital request.
Yeah, we should bring out the the members of the committee, Tammy Chair, Darius served on the committee, Chapin. Was on the committee and Nick was. Present for about half the presentations. I think you had to leave at lunchtime. And I I sat in as well.
As did Steve and and Brian.
Right, right. And this this went from nine in the morning till five, five in the evening. It was a very, it was a very long day.
Right, I think Lou, the only capital improvement project that we didn't think was particularly capital was out of the. Economic and Community Development, Business Development and Tourism about.
National events.
Yeah, and the the murals. Down on Wilson Avenue, and they're they're kind of confusing between the community service and community development. They're. Kind of a hard to discern who is doing what. But anyway, I think that was really the only thing.
I did have one other one under fire prevention. They cited eight point one point eight point. Four or IV, which was to replace city vehicles incrementally with electric or hybrid vehicles. But the two things that they identified that they wanted to buy were not hybrid or electric vehicles. So I felt like that was not an alignment to that. There may be another section in the P O C D that they intended to align to, but it did not align with what they what they had listed.
Okay, thank you, Chapin.
Now, this is a. Oh, go ahead, Darius. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I believe there might have been some discussion around that and the availability of a of electric vehicles around the time that we would need.
Right, like they didn't, they didn't exist, and I think was the answer we received.
Or they didn't, or they didn't exist for that for that purpose.
I think these were two administrative vehicles for fire marshals. And so it it seems like a good fit for. Like, I don't know, an F-150 instead of a Ford Ranger that could be electrified instead. Or they make a, I think, a hybrid hybrid truck. I'm not a car person, so I don't know, but. So I think there are some alternatives out there. You know, if they do want to cite this as the alignment. Yeah, I don't know that they needed to give us specific models in their in their requests, but I guess if if they are citing this. Say that again, Darius, sorry.
No, just saying understood, yeah.
Yep, if they, I mean, with their budget and what they're asking for and what they're citing, like if they are looking at getting a hybrid or electric vehicle, then yeah, it aligns to me.
Okay, as I started to say, this is a public hearing. So I will need to open it up to the public. But let me explain how this is done. Brian will explain how you can get online to make a comment. We simply ask that. You keep your comments as as brief as possible. And. Please keep them appropriate for G rating. And you have one opportunity to speak, so. When you speak, make certain that you cover everything that you wish to say. But again, I want to remind you that we we have no role whatsoever. In approving actual budgets. Or the amounts that the apartments, the departments are asking for. With with that, Brian, I'll turn it over to you to explain how people can access the system.
Sure. So for anyone from the public who'd like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. You click that once. If you're dialing on a phone, you would hit star nine. And then just a reminder that you need to, once you begin speaking, you need to say your name and address for us. With that, you have Diane Loricella.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. For the record, my name is Diane Loricella, 21, Little Fox Lane. First of all, I wanted to thank those on this little subcommittee, spending a whole day his yeoman's work. I wanted to express that. First, Happy Valentine's Day to you all. I love zoning and planning or planning and zoning, and I'm sure many of you do too. Here's the thing, no matter where I looked, I could not find a copy of the capital budget. I looked at the one that you're looking at today. I looked at the on the Finance Department's website where they used to always have it listed. I looked on the bottom of your agenda where you dutifully, and I think it's terrific, you have. You for this budget, for this agenda, rather, I couldn't find a link. To the capital budget. So I guess I'm feeling I'm kind of at odds. I will just repeat. Some topics that I've said before in the years about whether or not they, I agree that they match with P O C D, because I know that's your limit. And I just wanted to say very briefly that I do believe. And I do agree with Ms. Langgallis from last year, that I I hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission will explore a better and bigger role. Revisiting the role you used to play in helping. We need more oversight on expenditures. And so I understand what I should speak about tonight, and I will attempt to do so. In under the, I'm I am totally taking this from my experience reviewing the capital budgets of the past. I don't have one to look at, but I do know that the library is an important part of the fabric of our community. And I just wanted to say, if you do not see enough money put in the budget for a. Modern renovated main library, the time has come for the public and all of you good folks to. Advocate for it because it has been going on long enough, and I'm very pleased that we now have. Both of the the parking lots, so.
I I don't want to be rude. But you're not, you're not speaking to the topic. All all we can do is relate to the P O C D and you're now talking. About funding projects and we play absolutely no role in that.
Okay, if I may, the P O C D did state, and a lot of it was aspirational, but with backup, that the city. Residents and businesses deserved a full and modern library. And that's what I'm speaking to, not about, not about the cost, but the fact that we need one. So a newly renovated main library, and I'm hoping that the budget, capital budget included it. It is in the P O C D. Number two, under Water Pollution Control Authority. Again, I'm blindly going at this, but I do know for a fact we were under order from the state of Connecticut. So there should be something in the capital budget for them to repair. In the western side of the harbor, a siphon that was leaking. And that would be in a capital budget request. I again, I can't see the the budget. Number two, under DPW, under building upgrades, just based upon my knowledge of some history of of the P O C D. As well as budget making process is that I believe. To speak to the P O C D, again, aspirationally and specifically about. Building upgrades that include in our older buildings, energy management systems such as solar. Heat pumps, both geothermal and air source and storage units. If those are not built into this capital budget request, because it is in the P O C D. Then it should be, and I just wanted to be on record that I have been talking about this for years before it became popular. So the thing is, let's let's advocate for that. If you can make any notes in your recommendations. Well, I thought you, I thought you could, Mister Chair, but I'm and I'm sorry.
I might, I might agree that I I wish we could, but it is not a part of our our mandate.
Okay, well, thank you very much. With that, I, again, I would like to know where I could find the capital budget. Because I I do know that others still have to look at it, and I will make my concerns known, but I thank you for your service. If someone could please tell me where this capital budget could be found, and I'm pretty good on the city website. I didn't find it in the normal places where normal people would look for it. Thank you very much.
And I'll I'll check with the Finance Department, Diane. Usually they post it, post it on their their site. If anyone else would like to speak regarding the capital budget, you could use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialing on a phone, you would hit star nine. Seeing nothing further, Mister Sholton.
Okay, I'm not surprised, given our very limited role in this process. I do want to thank Tammy and the other members of the commission for. Their work again this this year. You know, Tammy gave a very brief presentation. But there was an awful lot of back and forth between the members of the committee and the departments involved. All right, Steve, what action is required of us at this point?
I I think Brian had prepared a resolution. On the capital budget, because we do have to get a memo back to the mayor's office indicating, you know, what your findings were in relation to your task with the capital budget.
Okay, Brian, and you put that up for us, please?
Yeah, hoping my computer can cooperate.
That's fine. We can see that.
And then I was just working on drafting some language based on Mister Bryce's comments regarding those those two. Fire department expenditure, the one fire department expenditure for the two vehicles.
Good, good. I I can't frankly. Help agreeing with Ms. Loricella that I think the the role we play. Ought ought to be altered, whether it's completely eliminated or improved in. Some way that makes this a more meaningful review to. Both the members of the commission and to the public.
Lou. Lou, if I may. Back when the Planning Commission was separate from the Zoning Commission a few years ago. There was a much more in depth. Not only review, but conversation and back and forth, and the the Planning Commission did actually. Change things and and set priorities and and we were able to say, okay, we think. This in one department is more important than than that, and and the finance director kind of gave us. A goal or we. We went through and kind of chopped out some items, and then he came back to us and said, okay, here's your goal. And then we went back and said, no, we think the goal should be this or that. Because of the presentation from the department heads and the feedback that we did receive from. From the public, and it lasted quite a number of evenings, and we sat over at City Hall in a small room. With, you know, pieces of paper all around the wall, writing in what we thought we should put in and take out. And then in the end, the Finance Department kind of went ahead and did their own thing, so it was a little bit frustrating, but it gave them a little bit of a guide more than, you know. We we don't have that ability anymore.
Right, right. Our role was changed along with the combining of the Planning and Zoning Commissions.
I think, you know, given that the P O C D, our P O C D is such a Rorschach. And is up to multiple perspectives and interpretation that that's where it leads us constantly.
Well, we did have a P O C D before Darius, but. I think it was more what the commission felt what the community needed, you know. Not to pick on any one department, but I can just think of this as an example. The Police Department wanted to rebuild the firing range, and. That kept getting kicked down the road because there were people on the commission thought that it was more important to redo the ball fields, you know, just as an example. And so ultimately then, the Finance Department says to the common council, okay, you have X number of dollars. You figure out what the priorities are, but it was, and they they looked at what our comments on the Planning Commission. What our comments were saying, yeah, we think the ball field is more important, so you figure out how to pay for it, you know, it was. There was a lot more back and forth.
Right. Steve, you have your hand up, please.
Yeah, I I think I I've been kicking around some ideas on how to make the process a little more worthwhile for everybody. I because I do think, I I I mean, the the old process was, um, my opinion was a disaster. I just thought it was. Really bad, just because at the end of the day, you know, it was like three evenings, six hours each at least. Where at the end of the day, and everybody pretty much ignored the Planning Commission's request, so I thought that was just not a good use of time. But I do think there is a value, especially for the commission, who's really tasked with doing long range planning. To see what all these departments are looking at for capital items, not only just the, you know, immediate. Needs and and requests, but also what we're thinking five years out. So that kind of factors into, you know, what the next P O C D might bring or or hold. Or what you're thinking about for certain neighborhoods. So I think that part of the process is really beneficial for everybody. But I don't think preparing a separate capital budget i- is the way to go. I think what we could do. Is modify, and I'm happy to send out some language I've been thinking about, modify the this portion of the ordinance to kind of. Clarify a little bit better what the commission's role is, and then also, I I think you do have the ability to. You know, like there was a couple items that, you know, Ms. Loricella brought up, or if you felt strongly about some of the items that. The some of the folks from the on the Board of Ed side that brought up about the Rotten School lockers, if you said, you know what, that really makes sense. I think you do have the ability to not necessarily deal with the numbers part of it, but say, hey, we think that this item should be funded. And then i- if you make recommendations that A, the public disagrees with or agrees with. And there's a public hearing requested, then you can go through the public hearing process. I don't think it's necessary for you guys to. Have a public hearing if it's not warranted, but I think having the ability to hold one, if you felt there was an item that really. Garnered public interest or public support, you could do so. I just think there's there was some ways to give the process a little more. I don't know if teeth is the right word, but meaning to it, but also make it a little more efficient for everybody as well. So I'm happy to send that out tomorrow or the next day.
Steve, you can send it out and perhaps next week. We can recommend that the staff pass that. On to the leadership of the common council, as well as the mayor for consideration.
Sure.
Okay. With that, this is the document we have in front of us.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, JJ.
Hi, more like more like a statement. So. If our goal is to. Hold is 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 to have the P O C D. hold, is, 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 is to have the P O C D as the framework of these decisions, and then as we're interviewing each department head and making sure that their request lines up with the P O C D, then I don't understand where the line is, is fuzzy, because I feel that we are doing that. Is it that we're not doing enough?
You know, um, you, you make a, you make an interesting point. Um, the, 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 the fact is that there, uh, the, the P O C D is such a rich document, um, that I, I believe, uh, maybe with some broad exceptions, uh, that you can make almost any, uh, capital expense, uh, fit, uh, fit into it. Um, and that's one of the things that I found, um, frustrating about this process.
So, so holding them accountable in terms of their requests and how it's, um, I guess, um, how it adheres to the P O C D. You know, because I think if we kind of get, if we cross lanes into the financial aspect of it, we are out of our lane. And, and I think that could bring on more problems.
And I, again, I, 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 I agree with you and uh, I'm, uh, hopeful that, uh, the language that Steve's going to share with us um, will allow us to have a, uh, uh, more meaningful, uh, process uh, without, without crossing lanes.
Thank you.
Um, can I have a motion to, uh, approve, uh, the, uh, document in front of us?
I'll make the motion, Lou.
Okay, uh, Tammy has, uh, made motion. Is there a second? Chapin, is that a second?
Uh, I will second, but happy to help, uh, Brian finish this edit here real quick.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I'm working off one monitor, otherwise I'd be able to.
I, I have it up if you'd like. So I, I think you're looking for the number that starts with a C. It's like C zero four.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Want to make sure I got the right one. And then, um, once you have that, and I have one other small edit to this.
Yeah, go ahead. What, what was the number, Chapin?
Yeah, uh, C zero four eight six. And then since the, um, citation is for electric or hybrid vehicles, I think it makes sense to, um, soften it to say electric or hybrid vehicles. It would be great if they could go fully electric, but I think with their citation makes sense for it to be both. So, and I want to applaud them on a separate, uh, I can save that for comments later, never mind.
Uh, we have a motion, it's been, um.
Are we planning to include anything about the special events or business development?
That was the one that you'd, you'd like to see them as, um, operating expenses potentially, right?
Yeah, do we want to do that, Darius? It's not a bad idea.
Why don't we say, can, yeah, consider?
Yes, consider, and that was, um, it was under the Arts Commission, under Economic Community Development, Art in Public Places Program. That it should be put in the operating budget.
And didn't we also have the same, same conversation regarding, uh, community development? And, uh, the, um, Christmas celebration, uh.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to with the, uh, special events under business development and tourism. And then Tammy brought up the arts in public spaces with the arts commission, which are both under the, uh, economic and community development department.
Right.
Right. Do you want the P O C D code, Brian?
Yes, please.
Okay, it's six dot three dot A.
Oh, that's a P S. Do you have the, 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 um, capital request code that starts with a C? Unless it's new, I'm not sure if that might be a new request.
I ha- I can, I have them before me. Which one do you want first, Brian?
Uh, the arts commission one?
All right, that is C zero eight zero four.
Oh, yes.
C zero eight zero four.
Thank you, Darius.
And the business development one? Did I have that on, Darius?
Yes, uh, C zero six eight zero.
Thank you.
C zero six eight zero for the Norok Special Events, yep. All right, looks good.
Okay, um, let's do a, uh, roll call on this, unless, uh, there are further questions?
All right, um, Ms. Tabashnik? You have to unmute your, your phone or.
Just give a thumbs up or something.
Okay.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, wow, seven thirty-nine. Um, next item, uh, is, um, twenty twenty-four oh three dash R Planning and Zoning Commission, text amendment to require that any new proposed building or buildings in any zone that exceeds a five thousand square foot footprint or twenty thousand square foot gross floor area be subject to a site plan review, uh, application unless a special permit is specified for the specific use. Uh, again, this is, uh, going to be a, uh, public hearing. Um, and, um, when, uh, the staff finishes its, uh, presentation, uh, I'll, uh, uh, talk, talk more about that. Uh, Steve, you're Brian.
Or so, as indicated in the memo, and we kind of spoiler alerted this a while ago when the new regulations were passed, there were going to be things, sorry about that, there were going to be things that we missed. And, um, we've been kind of working off of list of items that we've tabulated, uh, as we've been going through the new regulations and applying them to new applications. Some of those are minor and we can, you know, don't require any kind of immediacy. But then there are some that we've flagged that were like, we'd really like to jump on these now. That way there's no, um, misunderstanding or things that don't proliferate that we don't want to see. So this was the first one that we caught, and I think this is more of a clarification item. I think this was always sort of what we were talking about and kind of is consistent with some of our practices today. And as pretty much outlined by the chairman is, right, you know, the, the, the issue is right now there's not a trigger for an application to come to the commission under site plan approval. There are items that require a special permit, which are indicated in the use table by various factors, which could be their size or the type of use and where they're located. But there isn't something that says automatically, because you're this size, that you have to come to the commission for a site plan approval. And so what we did was, uh, you know, and just backing up for just a second, that, you know, the idea of a form-based code in, in many ways is to reduce a lot of things that come to the commission. Because if, if the regulations are laid out well, then what gets built should be consistent with the regulations and consistent with the wishes of the commission. But that doesn't mean that, you know, when you get to a certain size or a certain threshold, that the commission shouldn't have some oversight on the application to make sure it applies to some more rigorous standards. So that's why we came up with, uh, building footprint of five thousand square feet or a gross floor area of twenty thousand square feet, which is consistent with what we put together for the, um, sustainability requirements. I think that's, you know, a fairly straightforward amendment. We'd like to get that in, as I said, into the regulations as soon as possible.
Commission, um, we've, we've, we've discussed this a number of times, uh, among ourselves. Um, but, uh, are there any, uh, questions of, uh, Steve regarding this change?
No, it's relatively straightforward. And as you mentioned, we've discussed this.
Okay, um, then, uh, we'll, um, we'll open it up, uh, to, uh, the, uh, public. Um, as I, uh, said before the, uh, other, uh, public hearing, um, please, um, uh, give us your name and, uh, your address. And, um, be as, uh, brief as you can, uh, while making sure that you say everything that's important to you. Um, because, uh, you, you only have one opportunity to, uh, speak. Uh, and again, uh, we ask that it be, uh, G rated, um, so that, uh, uh, we hear, actually hear, uh, what you have to say. Um, with that, uh, Brian, uh, would you explain how people, uh, can, um, uh, access the opportunity to speak?
Sure. So if anyone would like to speak, uh, regarding this text amendment application, you could use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. You'd click that once, or if you're dialed in on a phone, you would hit star nine. And again, that's the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen. Click that once, or if you're on a phone, star nine. We have, uh, one person, uh, Lua family, just a reminder, uh, to start your comments with, uh, your name and your address, please.
Hi, um, I am calling regarding the, my name is Tanya Lua, and I'm calling regarding the middle school row in lockers.
Uh, we've, we've, um, already closed, uh, that public hearing.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I logged in and I wasn't sure if that was already.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, uh, number one, it was, number two, uh, as we pointed out, uh, earlier, we really have no role to play, uh, in determining what, what gets, uh, funded and what doesn't, or, uh, by how, how much.
Luckily, we found it consistent with the P O C D, so.
I thought exactly.
Yeah. Okay, we have anybody else?
Uh, it does not appear so, Mr. Schulman.
Okay, well, this is not surprising, uh, as I think, uh, has been pointed out. Um, this is, uh, uh, pretty straightforward, uh, rational, uh, fix to something that we, uh, uh, we missed in the original regulations. Um, and, and probably doesn't discuss, doesn't require, uh, a lot more discussion. Uh, with that, um, I, I don't see any reason why we can't, uh, act on this, uh, this evening, uh, rather than hold it over and, uh, wait until our next meeting. You can move that up.
Motion to approve.
Right, thank you, um.
I second.
Okay, so, uh, motion was made by Nick and seconded by, uh, Darius. Uh, any further, uh, discussion? All right, if not, uh, I mean, we could do this by a raise of hands, but it's, it's, uh, it's fairly important, so let's do a roll call.
Sure, um, I'll give you a heads up. I won't call on you first, Mr. Batsnick, but you'll be second. Mr. Williams?
We still can't hear you, Anna.
Sorry, Darius, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thumbs up for Ms. Tabashnik.
Oh, we just unmuted Anna. We just had it and then, there we go.
I know.
There we go.
There, there you go.
It's working?
Yes.
Yes.
Most cathartic yes of the night.
Uh, yes. Uh, Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Okay, that's terrific. Um, next, we, uh, have the, uh, approval of minutes, first from, uh, January seventeenth. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve them.
Okay, Darius has moved, and I believe Tammy has seconded.
I will second Lou.
Okay, uh, uh, we do this by a show of hands, uh, all those in favor? Uh, JJ, your hand didn't go up. Were you not?
No, I, I'm standing, I didn't read it.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, second, uh, the, um, meeting of, uh, January nineteenth, uh, motion to approve?
I'll move.
Okay, Nick has moved and Chapin has seconded. Again, a raise of hands, all those in favor? Um, it's unanimous. Uh, comments of director, uh, Steve?
Sure, so I'd sent out another memo, very similar to, um, what we just talked about in terms of an item that we felt needed to get, or items, I should say, this one that needed to get clarified sooner rather than later. This one boiled down to, um, some allowed encroachments that are pretty common in, in zoning in general, as well as what we've done in the past and well of, you know, what we have in the future regulations. Um, and then there was another one, oops, sorry, this likes to jump ahead a little bit, another one related to outdoor storage that, uh, can be a little problematic with the way they defined it in the way that it could be interpreted. So I think that would just avoid headaches for everybody. Uh, so the idea would be unless we get objections from the commission or there's questions, um, and, oh, I'm sorry, there's a third item is just clarifying that the number of stories beyond the first floor in the, uh, light and heavy industrial zone. So unless there's objections or questions from the commission, we would start the same process we just went through where we would have to send out referrals. There's a thirty-five day referral from the date, um, that we send it. So we would probably pick this up at your first April meeting, which I think is like April second. We'd have a public hearing and the public would be able to weigh in or comment. But, um, again, and we, we, this, for our, our thinking is these are more cleanup items than anything else. And obviously it would have been better if we caught these at the outset, but just, you know, items that slipped through the cracks during the whole process.
Can you scroll up for a second, Steve?
Uh, up as in?
As in like, uh, where the building, the storage definition was? This is more like for stockpiling and stuff.
Um, yeah, it was a bit of, like, so what's confusing about how the term outdoor storage is, is defined is, yeah, it lends itself to more of like stockpiling things. And I guess this can be interpreted from, uh, I'm keeping, uh, wood on my property for like my fireplace to, um, storing something like, you know, almost like junked vehicles at, at a certain point. So it's kind of, um, we want you to be able to store your, your firewood, but we don't want.
Seven cars in your backyard, yeah.
Right.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, and in, in, in the commercial zones, I think there's plenty of other items that regulate what you can or can't do on your property and where things can be located, particularly in the, the zones that fall into the form-based category. So I, A, it's a little superfluous, and then I think B, has a lot of unintended consequences as well, which I think we want to try to avoid.
All right, sending this memo again via email. I did see a PDF with some markup, but I, I didn't see this document, so I'm sorry. I, I missed this completely. Would love to take a closer look at it, but not spend everyone's time tonight while I'm reading.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to send that back out.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so let's, um, um, Send this, uh, send this out. For the referrals and put it on a future meeting agenda. Anything else, Steve?
Just to know, we got probably, and then we're expecting some more, like, so the, the, you know, the new regulations are effective Monday. So the deadline to submit under the old regulations is close of business Friday. We've got six or seven applications in and I think we're going to get another three or four more, so. Your March and April are going to be pretty full and then I am anticipating. Several people waiting for the new regulations, so that's going to make your April, May pretty full too, so I. But it's all, you know, I don't think anything we got in. Well, maybe there are a couple which I don't want to reveal tonight, but they, they'll be, a lot of them will be on a smaller scale, but there are a couple interesting ones that came in too, but we'll. We'll probably get most of those posted on the city application page next week. If hopefully Brian or I will remember to send out a link just to the overall. We'll, we'll let you know what the new ones are and you can start to, you know, cruise through them. Our, our plan is to try to. Get the easy ones that, that we know are. Quick action items for you that don't, aren't heavy lifts. We're going to try to get those on as quickly as possible to free up. Later schedules for other items.
Okay. That it?
For me, yes.
Um, under comments of the commissioners. We are once again beginning the process of hiring peer reviewers for architectural services. Uh, and for traffic and parking, we're doing it. Uh, in conjunction with. The redevelopment agency, TMP. Uh, and the city's purchasing department. And that will get underway in the coming weeks. Um, I've asked Chapin to. Uh, serve on that committee. I'll also. Uh, serve on that committee as I. Uh, have in, in the past. Uh, any other comments from commissioners?
I'll just say, uh, from the affordable housing study. Uh, there's a survey out right now that the city has put together with the think redevelopment and the housing group. Uh, please fill it out, share it.
Nick, is, is that the one that came directly from the consultant? Because it says it's related to the city. Uh, but it has no markings that it's a city. If you will, city document. And so I was uncomfortable. Uh, filling it out, thinking that. Uh, I didn't know what it was. Uh, I don't know whether, I don't know whether it's too late.
No, you haven't.
To get the city's fingerprints on it or not, but it would be well to do it if you can.
Was that a physical mailing, Louis, or was that?
No, what, what I got was an email.
Okay.
I got the email and then there is also, I believe, the Department of Parks and Rec sent. Hard mail, snail mail questionnaire that really didn't have a lot of city identification on it, Lou, it's about a. Two or three page folded over kind of brochure questionnaire. And the other one came from Amelia, I thought.
Yeah, or Michelle.
Oh, maybe it was Michelle.
I think it might have been Michelle.
No, mine, mine came directly from the consulting firm.
I'm not sure, Lou, which if you want to forward your email, I can take a look at it, but there is a survey out there that I've seen a lot of branded stuff with the city. Name all over it, so. Complete it, folks, and share it if you don't mind.
I think the consultant did send it out separately as well to everybody that's on the portable housing study committee.
Okay, Anna, you had something you wanted to say? We're not he- hearing you. Of course, you're not speaking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay, I had to wait till I was unmuted. Thank you for your patience with that. I had three, three topics. That I wanted to speak on or, or ask on. The first is residential parking passes for East Norwalk. Last week or two weeks ago, there was. A really interesting economic and community development subcommittee where the larger. Issue of residential parking passes for the city came up. As you know, particularly in relationship to the East Norwalk TOD, my concern is about. East Norwalk and the multiple times that that's been recommended. I'm going to ask again for either a formal letter. To go to Jim Travers or to see if he could come. To one of our meetings to speak with us, to give us an update on the progress. I believe in October, November, we were told that Brian Lutz was doing research on options. At the meeting, the subcommittee meeting. Two weeks ago. There was mentioned that there needed to be a change in ordinance, but not necessarily that there was a plan to do so or what the next steps were. There was also mention, I think from Jessica Vanaszek. That one option was to change. An upcoming RFP related to enforcement, but not necessarily a commitment that that would happen or what would need to happen for that to happen. So given how key it is. I think from, from what I've read about the TOD for the success of the TOD, I want to ask again for that to move forward. Should I go to my next one or, or I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything related to that.
Uh, Steve, you know, there, there was a, a fairly substantial article in the newspaper regarding. The, that meeting and this issue. I, i- is there any further role for us to play? Uh, i- in this? I mean, I think if there is, then we ought to, and if there isn't. Um, we ought to let it, um, uh, play out within the city.
Um, you know, you know, I, I, I think it would just be maybe to. What Ms. Tabachnik kind of pointed out would be you guys requesting information. I, I think if you formally request you'd like. Further discussion or further clarification, then that's the role, I mean it. At the end of the day, it's a broader city policy that you don't have control over, but if you have concerns on how this is relating to. The development or things going on in an area, then I think you can try to put, apply pressure that way.
Well, does it make more sense for us to send a letter to TMP? I mean, I'm not sure. That we learn anything more than we saw in that newspaper article. Um, I, I, I think if, you know, if we have someone here from TMP. Uh, we're going to hear that all over again. Maybe it makes more sense. Uh, for us to send them a letter. Just expressing our concern that this issue. Uh, needs to be addressed and resolved one way or another. I mean, I, uh, at, at this moment. Um, I, I, I don't have a position on it. Uh, I know the, many of the residents of East Norwalk do. But in the, in the, in the interest of. Uh, the city, uh, we, we ought, we ought to be in favor of. At least moving the issue forward to resolution one way or another.
I mean, um, we can put a, we can put a. Quick memo together on behalf of the commission to, you know, address it to whomever you'd like, TMP, the mayor's office. And for, and you guys can take a look at, I don't know if we'll get it done for next Wednesday. We'll try. If not, then we'll put it on your, for your next meeting. That's pretty easy to lift.
Okay, does that make sense to everybody?
Thank you.
Oh, please, go on.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your patience with me. Uh, during the rewrite discussions in, I think maybe November, it was sort of a late breaking issue. Um, an issue came in about ways to look at the possibility for expanding the availability of daycare slots. In residential zones, in home-based centers and trying to figure out what the different options might be. Whether we were in favor or against it, whether there's any possibility. And I believe. The plan was to bring that up in January in the new year. Uh, so I wanted to ask if we know when that is going to be on the agenda or if staff has been doing any research. Into that. Wanted to ask a follow-up on that.
Sure, yeah, we are a little behind on that, but Michelle Andreski is going to be working or trying to get. Data from Board of Ed on, and also what they think are the impacts or what they're working on on that level. And then that could inform what you guys may or may not decide to do from a regulation standpoint, so. Hopefully we'll have that data within the next month and have some recommendations.
Okay, thank you. And then the third one was that. Um, during that discussion, and I encourage everybody if you haven't watched it to watch it from economic and community development. There was significant discussion and then also last week during land use, there was discussion of zoning enforcement. Along with other enforcement, but you know, our concern is zoning. Particularly, I'm sure you guys saw that, that, uh, one of the contractors for the Sono School. Was sort of nixed because there was an open zoning violation from twenty seventeen. And I know that the department is hiring extra people and a neighborhood. Relationship manager and all of that. But I want to again reiterate. Uh, that I think it would be beneficial to have a community-facing educational Q and A. Session, not a, not a hearing. To hear about problems, for all the different departments to hear about the problems going on, right? Like, that's the neighborhood improvement manager more role. But more Q and A to help all of us. Understand how enforcement works, what's in our control, what's not, what the process is, when it takes long, why it takes long. Where things can or cannot be changed, that I think that would be beneficial and I wanted to. Say that in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, we, we actually have an update on that. One in particular, because we've made a little progress on that front. We were, Jessica Vonacek and I were talking. Last week about this and we, we were, came up with a rough plan that we're thinking. And this is a fungible date just because of there are several. Staff hires on the city level that would be affected by this, that haven't been brought on board yet, like we have a. Second deputy zoning inspector that we have interviews set up for next week. There's the community relations person and also another blight person, so we need, we want to get everybody on board before we have the meeting, but we're thinking. At the, maybe at the end of April. That will have like a community meeting, community forum where we'll have all the departments there that. Have a role in the enforcement process, so it'll probably be, you know, P and Z, Blight. Um, Fire Marshal, Health Department, Police, and I think I'm leaving somebody out, maybe DPW. And they would all kind of say, here's our. Jobs, responsibilities and things we have oversight on would be some kind of a quick, hopefully not too long of a presentation. And then we'd have maybe like breakout tables with all those different departments would have staff there available to answer specific questions. We've been working in our department on the actual. Complaint process, trying to streamline that a little bit, because right now that's one of our big internal problems. We have too many lines of. Ways you can make complaints. We want to try to funnel it so we can track it, because right now it's almost impossible for us to track stuff when it comes in. So that's what we're working on, but I think. That public session will probably occur hopefully at the end of April, if not shortly thereafter, pending getting all the hires on board. I'd like to have. Everybody there at one night. It'd be nice to have faces to the people that do the main interacting with the public, so I think that would be a good approach.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it, Steve.
That it, Anna? Thank you. Uh, anything else?
Uh, just quickly, you know, perhaps we can come up with like a quick fact sheet. That centers around some of the more common complaints or violations that we get. Uh, as it pertains to certain zones. And we can have them in office for people to take, or we can mail them out specific to certain zones. Be it parking on your lawn or leaving, having idle vehicles or vehicles that no longer work that are just stored on your. In your driveway. You know, perhaps we can look into fact sheets and things like that.
Yeah, we do have a little bit of that now on our website, kind of saying, this is a zoning violation. This is not a zoning violation, so. I mean, I think that kind of comes across all the departments where, I mean, sometimes zoning is a catch-all for everything, or it's like, oh, this is zoning. Well, it's not actually zoning, it's Fire Marshal or it's Blight, or it's actually not a violation, so. There's a lot of that, but I think broader coordination on that would be helpful too.
All right.
It's just eight oh eight. Steve. Can we talk a bit about FOIA?
That's, it's up to you guys, we can.
Well, what's, uh, what's the feeling of the commission? We. We are way behind in terms, although Steve got some information out to us today. But we are way behind in terms of educating ourselves. I don't know if anyone else sat through. Uh, the hour-long conversation. Uh, regarding a Freedom of Information Act, but. That's important information for us. To both hear and absorb, uh, so that we make certain that. Uh, our actions are in alignment with the law. And the question is, do you want to take some time this evening to talk about that?
Nick is shaking.
Talk about what specifically? How long do we see the discussion going?
We, we can determine, it's, you know, it's eight oh nine, we can determine that we'll discuss it for half an hour.
Eleven minutes.
Well, was there something that we were all supposed to watch?
Should we watch it first?
I didn't, I'm sorry, if there was, I didn't see that.
I sent out the link again, it was, it had an email this morning.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, if people, if people have not.
I mean, I might have seen the email, but I didn't watch the thing. I didn't know it was.
Well, again, it's going to take an hour of time. Uh, but I.
I would prefer it not be tonight.
It, it will be an hour well spent. What I would suggest then is, Steve, is. The extent we can do it in the not-too-distant future. Well, we have everybody review the video. And we literally put it on our agenda, one of our agendas as an agenda item. Uh, so that we can go over it and if possible. Uh, have, have with us. One of the city's attorneys to lead us in that conversation.
Yep, or, or we could have a special meeting before our meeting, depending on how long.
Right, or just a special meeting itself. Um, I mean, again, you know, there is a state requirement for. Educating ourselves. I don't know. Uh, how many of us have met that? Uh, Steve, that's a, that's a continuing requirement, isn't it?
Yeah, it's four hours, two years, so I think you're, everybody.
Many of us have already met it for this year and next. Uh, by attending that all-day session.
Well, you're, you're compliant, you were compliant as of December thirty-first. The new clock starts January one, so you have. Two years to complete four hours.
Okay.
So are we watching this on our own and then reconvening at the next meeting for discussion?
My, my, I don't think we're going to be able to squeeze it into the next meeting. So we will formally put it on an agenda. Uh, for a meeting in between now and then. Um, you can, you can watch the video.
Yeah, I'll resend the link tomorrow with the memo. About the encroachments, so you have that as well.
Okay, good, good. Uh, any other business, any other comments? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, JJ has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Tammy has seconded. I will see you, hopefully see all of you next week, same time, same place.
I will not be here next week, but y'all have fun without me.
So disappointed, Nick. I, I won't be here either, but I will log in. I can't promise it will be on time, but I will log in.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, JJ. Uh, Nick, enjoy Cuba.
I will.
Don't forget the chewing gum, Nick.
Yes, yes, it's on the list. Don't, don't worry. Hi, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.